It says streaming live.
Yeah, it says it's on air. Do we want that off for the prayer and invocation?
It's ten o'clock. I think we're ready.
Yeah, do we, we want the light off for?
I want it on.
We want it on. We're good.
Okay. Well, good morning. I'm going to ask, we stand for invocation and pledge allegiance. Bow and an attitude of prayer. Thank you heavenly Father for this beautiful day in Washington County. Thank you for the opportunity to be present and to serve. Lord, we think of this morning, particularly this, this, this week, this time, this day, this time of year, of our first responders, for the awesome responsibility when they are running into danger when others are running from it. Lord, watch over them, protect them, give them guidance. And Lord, we pray for the families that twenty-two years ago lost so many of their loved ones. And even today, families are struggling with, with sickness and illnesses directly attributed to the attack. Lord, watch over them, bless them, heal them if you will. Lead, guide, and direct us this day. I pray in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, we'll officially open our September twelfth County Commissioners' meeting to order. And first up at this time is Commissioners', now, we have approval of minutes, excuse me. We have minutes from August twenty-second and a separate set of minutes from August twenty-ninth. Motion for each one independently?
Motion to approve minutes for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to second for the minutes as submitted for August twenty-second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, sing.
For that set.
Okay. Okay. Motion for the August twenty-ninth minutes.
Motion to approve August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor for minutes for August twenty-ninth as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Five o. Thank, thank you. Next up is Commissioners' reports and comments. And Mr. Wagner?
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank all the employees who came this morning for Employee Service Award and employees that couldn't make it. Congratulations to them for serving us well in Washington County. I think we went up to thirty-five years, I believe, of service. Yesterday, I was able to attend a Patriot Day, the first one that Saint Mary's Catholic School did. It was very well-run, very nice. Basically, gathered all the students and had some first responders prayed through the parking lot in their, in their vehicles. And it was some prayer and a day of remembrance. Tonight, remind everybody, there's remembrance in the park at five o'clock, I think it starts. Correct. Show five o'clock or six?
Six.
Yeah, look, I hit five for some reason. I'd be there anyway. But anyway, that's tonight at the park. And several of us were able to attend Antietam Battlefield dedication of the New Visitor Center. That was, that was a nice event. And I want to thank them. They do provide a lot of tourism and a lot of memories for Antietam. That's, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good morning, everyone. Also, I want to thank all of our county employees for all their service, especially the ones in attendance and those not in attendance, and all of our employees and to our staff who did put on the presentation. It went very smooth. Boonsborough was a busy day, a busy town over the past week. I attended Boonsborough Days, but they also, on Saturday of Boonsborough Days, they had a special flag presentation of their town flag. About fifty people gathered around the flagpole and they hoisted the new town flag and spoke of the history, how the flag was developed. And then last night, I did attend the Boonsborough nine eleven Remembrance Parade. It was a very large parade, a good turnout. And again, thanks to all our first responders. I too had the chance to attend Saint Mary's Patriot Day event yesterday. It was very well-done. And then I also was at the Antietam Battlefield for the opening of their new visitor center. It's well-done. I recommend everybody to go and look at the new displays and everything that they have on. It's very, very eloquent and correctly displayed to read some of that information. And then Saturday, Sheriff Albert had coffee with the sheriff for people to come in at a Brooks House to speak to him. And as I was leaving, more people were coming in. So it was nice to have a one-on-one with the sheriff. Wings and Wheels, I think, made the front page of the paper. It was spectacular. There was cars and people, airplanes everywhere, a lot of wheels going on. And then I also attended on Saturday, Lowe's at North End had their bunk bid promotion where they had probably about a hundred-some volunteers with different areas, making different parts of bids, like assembly line type of effect, so that no child in Washington County would be without a bid. So Lowe's and their employees and volunteers, a bit of credit for them. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, Mr. Keever?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things here. Again, thanks to our county employees, our HR staff in particular, I know they're stretched thin at the moment, for putting on our employee service awards. I think that's, it's always good to recognize the longevity of our employees and the, the great breadth of knowledge they bring to public service. I'm sure many of you heard that there was a, a fire in a solar field in Hancock several days ago. And I'm not sure, and I don't want to jump the gun in any way and, and cause blame, because I don't know what started the fire. I don't think that determination has been made. And I know solar fields are regulated by the state. I know there's some county regulations that go into place. But might we need to look at something along the lines of some kind of response plan for each solar field? We're talking, in some cases, hundreds of acres and outlying areas that could be threatened if, if a fire did take hold. Thankfully, this one was contained in short notice. Kudos to the Hancock Police Fire Department and other agencies that helped. But do we need to have something in our code or in our plan to help address if a fire, to help mitigate a fire? Just something to think about. Again, I'm not sure. I haven't been briefed on the exact cause, but I think that's something that we need to consider going forward. Conversation for another day, perhaps, but just get that in our minds. A couple of years ago, we updated our, the county's sexual harassment training policy, and we required an annual training. I don't think that has been done recently. Maybe, Michelle, if you could look into that policy for us, is that still correct, that we require an annual training? And maybe you can confirm when the last time that was, that was handled?
I'll double-check on that for you.
Okay. And then if you could also look into, I'm sure it does, but make sure it covers elected officials. But I also think in our policy, we need to address, just from my tenure working for a university, even as a part-time employee adjunct instructor, I was required to sit through annual training rather extensive for Title IX pertaining to some college students and activities on campus. And I know we bring in interns into our department and into county government, and that's a great thing, that, that we're giving that experience to college students. But does that subject us to any of Title IX provisions as well? Are we responsible to notify a university if an incident were to happen here that involved an intern? I think that, that's something that we need to, you know, consider. And perhaps we're under no obligation because we're not a university. But I think we should look into that. I was a little disappointed. Last week, I believe it was, I saw a social media post that the county posted online, a video relating to why so many warehouses in Washington County, kind of explaining that away. I just found that to be tone deaf, especially as we're going through a comprehensive plan update and we're trying to solicit public comments from people. I just wonder if we're not sending a message to our citizens that would want to speak out or come or have already emailed us about that very concern, if we're not being a little premature on a message like that. I think it might be helpful to maybe refrain from that. Just allow the public comment to come out and speak. I think that, that would be good. I'm sure a lot of the concerns we heard recently was due to the accident on eighty-one that claimed two lives. And it sounds like a, a routine occurrence. We hear about it time and again, and it's just heartbreaking. I, I, I know several people who just steer clear of the interstates with, with how dangerous eighty-one is in particular. And I know we're all working hard to try and get three lanes on Interstate eighty-one. As a county, we're kind of limited to what we can do, I suppose. But I would like to propose that we have created a special committee or a group, an ad hoc committee, I don't know what the, the name should be, but whose sole purpose is to discuss and promote and lobby for full funding to widen I eighty-one. I know this is done with the Community Lobbying Coalition. I'm very thankful for their efforts, but I don't want that messaging to be watered down in any way with the other things that they're advocating for. I would suggest that we have elected county, state, municipal leaders. It impacts our communities, smaller communities as well, citizens that are impacted. And I, I'd like to bring a developer to the table as well. I know some of the, the thoughts or concerns, it's, it's some of the overdevelopment that we're seeing in Washington County. And development is a, is a good thing. But I just think the development surge that we're seeing in Washington County is increasing at a far greater rate than what our interstate infrastructure can handle. And that puts our citizens at risk. And that's a concern that I have. I, I would like for this committee to, again, not just lobby for and promote and ask for that funding that we need at the state level or at the federal level, but also maybe look at proposing changes for safety in the interim. Some ideas that I think should be considered is looking at the development, the, the building of warehouses and truck stops. That certainly brings in that traffic into our, our community. Do we need to reduce a speed on I eighty-one? I believe the speed may be sixty or sixty-five now in many parts. It's not seventy-five like other interstates are, and seventy or, or sixty-eight in Washington County. But is there a need to limit the speed on I eighty-one until this happens? Do we need to limit development at diamond interchange? Cloverleafs, from my understanding, and I'm not a traffic expert, but Cloverleafs provide a degree of safety that, that a diamond interchange just, just does not. I was traveling through Pennsylvania this summer, and I was surprised to notice that in, in at least the stretch of interstate that I was on, the left lane is for through traffic only, not, not just vehicles, trucks as well. And I, I know in my mind, you typically see truck traffic in the right lane, not the passing lane. And I don't know, is that a model that, that we should consider, again, in the interim? Should we limit the use of our ramps to trucks for just planned deliveries only or emergencies? And I'd like other ideas to be considered and vetted. And, and maybe some of these ideas that I'm proposing aren't, would, would complicate things or aren't necessary. Let's bring other ideas to the table. And I think if, if any of those ideas seem drastic to limit development, well, I hope Annapolis thinks that's drastic too. And, and our federal, our Congressman Trone and our United States Senators, I, I hope that they would think that to be a drastic approach too. Because it's heartbreaking to see the accidents that we have, the citizens that say they won't drive on that road in their own community because it's, it's dangerous. I hold my breath every time I merge onto eighty-one. And I just, I, I think that if we could create a committee, maybe we include our neighbors to the north in Pennsylvania. Certainly, if, if Washington County is widened into three lanes and Pennsylvania is still two, that creates a bottleneck. And guess where? In, in our, in our community. So I, I would like us to consider that, maybe law enforcement as well. Just thinking about it, I would add someone from law enforcement who, who sees and monitors the traffic on eighty-one to help maybe suggest some, some ideas too, again, in the interim, until three lanes can come to fruition. So don't need to comment right now necessarily, but I, I would like us to consider that maybe at a future meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Barr. And Wayne, thank you for highlighting that issue. It's an issue that's been on the forefront of my mind for, since I started this campaign. Just a couple of comments to dovetail off of what you just said. You know, the, the video that was done on our webpage by our media team focusing on the warehouses was, the quality of it was, was excellent. And I think you saw my email about it, where, you know, the issue for me, and I, I now understand that this is the first of a number of productions by our team that are going to address the, the interplay and explore the, excuse me, explore the interplay between these issues of I eighty-one congestion, safety, warehousing, development, truck stops, and the like that so concern so many of our citizens. As we saw by the large number of comments on the webpage product that was, was produced by our team, it, it was very helpful in generating conversation and, I think, some good ideas. You know, the, the speed limit issue, I, I know there are cities across the country of the interstates go through them where the speed limit reduces to fifty miles an hour. The diamond interchange is an issue. Our legislators, particularly at the federal level, have not delivered, in my view. Okay, this has been a problem for over twenty years. Three lanes is not going to be sufficient, in my view. And we're unique with twelve and a half miles of interstate here, eighty-one, which is increasingly congested. Three lanes will not be sufficient. So what's the answer? You're going to have to find other ways of mitigating it. Because this is an area where all of our population traverse that road to get to entertainment, shopping, food, you know, sports events and the like. And so it might be a small area of land that's impacted, but the warehouses, the truck stops, the congestion, the infrastructure issues, you know, impact everybody. And it's, it's of concern. So I agree with what you just said. And there are some very good ideas in there that we should take up and look, look at. The Antietam Battlefield Visitor Center was also mentioned. And, you know, the only thing I'd like to say I was out there, it's great that it's been updated and everything. But the leadership there and of the Park Service and of the department above it, they need to open their eyes to the very important economic and historical event that used to occur there annually, the Fourth of July celebration with the fireworks that puts Washington County on the map. And I would say that our two United States Senator and our Congressman have not delivered. They've hardly lifted a finger if they've done that at all. It's a Democratic administration with Democrat Senators and Democrat Congressmen who have not delivered in that regard to addressing our need here with the battlefield and the Fourth of July. So I think that's very important. And there's going to have to be more done. And I know we've got a lot of good citizens working on it.
May I interrupt now?
Yes, you may.
There's also seemed to be an attempt to limit or eliminate the luminary ceremony in December as well.
That's correct. And, you know, the one issue that the Park Service is, you know, is saying is it's a safety issue. Their concern about terrorism at Antietam Battlefield. From that perspective, and it's amazing, it's nine eleven yesterday, and we should, you know, think that if we acquiesce and we don't do events because of the threat of terrorism, then we should not have a Boston Marathon anymore. We shouldn't have fireworks on the mall in Washington DC. We should shut down if we're going to stop doing patriotic Americana-type things simply because of some theoretical threat. Okay? Now, if you get substantial information, I used to work in terrorism. I was briefing people about Al Qaeda and Osama bin Laden across the Pacific region. And I had just arrived back in the United States in San Diego on the day that nine eleven happened. Okay? So this, I understand. And I, I just don't understand why we would fold in, on some theoretical, theoretical case of, of a threat. So I would ask our state delegation to do, I mean, our federal delegation to do a lot more. I know our state legislators, Mike McKay and others, are, are focused on this, but it's important to us. Now about nine eleven, and we, I was at Saint Mary's and a couple other places. Nine eleven means a lot to me. I knew my life changed dramatically on nine eleven. And we've been commemorating first responders. And I looked at those kids yesterday, and they didn't really know what a first responder was. Let's talk about our firemen and firewomen. Let's talk about our police, our law enforcement, and our emergency services people. Okay? Our first responders, that's who they represent. So, but life- So, but life changed for everyone that was in the military or going in the military, or people decided to go in the military, for the lives that were lost, because we fought in Afghanistan for 21 years, and it ended with a debacle in August a year ago. So let's think about them when we think about what happened on 9/11 and how life changed. Now, for more pleasant things. The Board of Elections is meeting tonight at 7:00 PM to review, in a public hearing, their ideas for a second voting location, or possibly a third voting location if they get over the threshold of 100,000 registered voters, or if the county commissioners would to decide to pay for a third location. So they're going to be open for public comment tonight at 7 o'clock. It overlaps or conflicts with the memorial in the park, I get it, but this is an important element of our citizenship and our voting rights. And we should be seeking the greatest inclusivity and the opportunity for people to vote from not just in Hagerstown, where we had two early voting sites at the main library and on Virginia Avenue. We need to think how we get the most access to voting. And I would also like to have us think about if there's something the county can do with their commuter buses during that two-week voting, early voting, where we could allocate an extra bus line or two to get out to Hancock, Clear Springs, and Big Pool to facilitate transportation. And if we don't get a voting site that's amenable to getting those people, or down to Darden or Roarsville, et cetera. Something that I'd like to just explore, and I'm not sure if it's feasible, but I'd like us to explore it, because I would like to get as many people to the polls as possible. Smithsburg Days are the 23rd and 24th, the Steam and Craft Show. That's a great event. I'd just like to highlight that since I'm from that area of the county. And there's always so many amazing things going on, like you guys have already mentioned, but I will just stop there. Oh, I'd just like to mention, I did meet with some folks on human trafficking at Meritas Hospital, Dr. Joshi and others. It is an issue in our community. We sometimes don't really think about it, but it is an issue. And I just, you know, I think I'll have more comments on that at another time. So thank you very much for your patience.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Yes, been a very busy two weeks, and particularly over the weekend. Just a couple of things that I have is this Sunday, September 17th, is the 161st anniversary of the Battle of Antietam, which we talk about events and things that have changed our community, changed our area. And certainly, 161 years ago, the battle just 12 miles south of us goes down in infamy, the amount of people that were sacrificed their lives there at the Bloody Lane and the impact it had on Sharpsburg and the surrounding communities and throughout Hagerstown and Washington County. So Sunday is the 161st anniversary.
It's September 17th?
Yes, it is.
There's something else happening that day in Commissioner Barr?
Well, we won't talk about that. Over the weekend, I also not only attended, but I think I camped out there. The local Beaver Creek community just east of town had an open house, the churches, the Poffenberger Windmill Acres Farm has a museum, and the schoolhouse was open both Saturday and Sunday all day. And although we were disappointed with the turnout, the folks that were there were very much interested in the community, the history, and everything about the Beaver Creek community. The Fly Fisherman has a group, they were there, just a number of venues, and hopefully they can continue on an annual basis, have a Beaver Creek Open House Weekend. Everything was free, everything was just family-oriented, and it was a good turnout. Having the schoolhouse, I was kind of stuck there, and I appreciate my fellow commissioners that attended a number of the other events that I just could not leave the schoolhouse and get to. On a real positive note for our community, was just informed here this morning that the math teacher at Salem Avenue, Raymond Weber, who was elected Teacher of the Year for Washington County a few months ago, was just informed yesterday at a surprise presentation that he is one of seven Teacher of the Year Award candidates, nominees for finalists for the state of Maryland. So there's 24 jurisdictions in the state, there's only seven finalists, and Raymond Weber is one of those seven. So we say both congratulations and possibly good luck. The Maryland State Teachers Award Banquet, and make an announcement who will represent the state of Maryland nationally for the next year will be announced in a very special event in Martins West later in October. So we wish Raymond Weber the best and hope he does well. Would love to see someone from our community be awarded the State Teacher of the Year and move forward. So, Senator? We'd appreciate it. Some other upcoming events, remember it's in the park, I think it's already been mentioned, is 6 o'clock this evening at Hagerstown City Park, at the Tribute Gardens there next to the Hager House. United Way Day of Caring is next Thursday, September the 21st. The Comprehensive Plan 2040 Meeting, the next meeting is Thursday, September the 21st, at Boons Bar Schaefer Park Community Center. The Chamber Bash for the month of September is also September 21st at 5:00 PM at the ARC of Washington County. Evening Commissioners Meeting in Clear Spring, October the 17th. Also, we have the Comprehensive Plan Community Meeting is in Smithsburg on October the 10th. And I'm trying to think what else we have. Commissioners, anything else that we've missed or need to cover?
President, I'd just like to emphasize once more that, you know, we had hundreds of comments on our webpage about the warehouse video. We need people to show up at the public hearings and provide specific recommendations, ideas, and concerns so that our staff and we can understand the pulse of the community better. And there's a lot of great ideas out there if we, you know, that are probably unique that I would solicit if we could get them to come in and express themselves at one of our public hearings, or submit something online to the staff.
Can I ask regarding that, from what I've attended and I've seen, we show a video, and then it's kind of, you walk around and look at some maps on easels. It didn't seem like there's a formal collection of comments. Are we, what are we?
Jill Baker is accumulating all of those comments so that she can report those to the Planning Commission. So once all of the public hearings are over, they'll take it back into draft mode with the Planning Commission and take all of those comments into consideration and make any potential revisions at that point.
But are we actively collecting comments?
Yes.
At the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus, there's also some organizations out in the city and the town that are doing their own step-by-step analysis of the Comprehensive Plan, gathering information from people associated with them. That's correct, Jill?
Yes, with Greater Hagerstown, the City of Hagerstown, we receive comments from the city, and we will receive comments from Greater Hagerstown. We have an actual pass.
I suppose, I guess my concern was, you know, some of the breakout where citizens kind of like circle around in groups, there might be a county employee there, commissioner or two, but no one's taken notes of what's being said. There's some great ideas that are being talked about, but it didn't seem to be recorded in any fashion. It wasn't a public testimony, a hearing where?
They're documenting their notes after the fact. So after the meeting is over, they're documenting their notes from the conversations that they're having with all of those residents who are coming.
Would we be able to get a copy of those notes after each meeting, rather than waiting until the end?
And what I've observed, the two meetings I've been at, the one-on-one contact with our staff, the citizens, has been exceptional. I think the citizens like being able to speak, they're going up to the maps and pointing where they live, and they're getting an explanation by your team, and I've seen that to be pretty well-received.
And I like that format. I just didn't see where anything was being memorialized about what was said. While it was being said, it wasn't recorded on audio, nobody was submitting a written statement. So just so we're clear, we're going on what staff is recalling from those conversations.
The two meetings only had about 10 citizens each so far, so that's why we're trying to recruit more people to attend. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Commissioners. Staff reports, Michelle?
I attended the Solid Waste Employee Appreciation Luncheon at Earth Care Road. I enjoyed the food and the camaraderie. It was nice to get out and meet employees. I'm starting to take tours of our county facilities. My first tour was at the permits, 747 Northern Avenue, where I toured permits and inspection, engineering, and planning operations. I also attended the Comprehensive Plan Meeting in Clear Spring, and I'd like to thank staff for their dedication and commitment to the community. They're really doing a great job answering those questions for people who are attending. I also attended the Home Builders Association Meeting, and I met with local builders, and we discussed economic indicators as well as other factors impacting the housing market here in Washington County. Continuation of the tours, I met with Judge Wilson to get acquainted with the courthouse operations, and he also provided me with the tour of the courthouse. The Employee Service Awards were held this morning, and I just want to echo some of the comments that we heard earlier, and thank our employees for their dedication, as well as our Human Resources Department for putting on that function, and commend them for a job well done. Just a quick note on the Harpers Ferry Road project that's being carried out by the CNO Canal National Historic Park. The contractor is currently tracking to have the wall reopened by mid-October. They will install structural concrete, pave and stripe the roadway, and install temporary Jersey barriers on the canal ward shoulder. The masonry facade will be installed after the roadway is opening, and I know that's overlapping with the 340 closure that's happening in Harpers Ferry right now. So I've reached out to our roads department to find out if they have any potential updates regarding that, it's causing some congestion in Sharpsburg. I also want to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Harvey made regarding the video that PR created. They were asked to create a series of videos on the warehouses, as well as other topics impacting Washington County, and they really did a great job of preparing that video. The video is going to be sent out, and just as this one was, it'll be sent out to the Commissioners prior to posting it so that we can get your comments and feedback. It did generate some pros, it generated some cons, it generated some comments on Interstate 81, so it really generated a lot of conversation, and I think they did a great job. And just to address some of the comments from Commissioner Kiefer regarding Interstate 81 and promotions, and working with the Greater Hagerstown Committee, as well as our engineering department is working with Transportation Committee. We have voiced our concerns and indicated that Interstate 81, as well as Interstate 70, are top priorities for Washington County. We've got Jim Kirchvoll involved, Greg Snook. I know that John Barr has personally reached out to Governor Moore regarding our issues with Interstate 81. PR is also currently working on a video on the issues that we have on Interstate 81. And when we were at MAKO, we did present to MDOT that Interstate 81 is our top priority. Unfortunately, it does take years to get that funding in place, and it takes even more years to get the construction underway. So we are addressing that, and we do have that at the top of our list when we attend our transportation committees.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I know, since I've been a Commissioner at MAKO, we've talked about 81 since 2016, and I'm sure Commissioner Barr, Commissioner Klein talked about it before then. I think it would be helpful if we had a separate standalone committee that was just focused on 81, because many times these committees, and they do great work, it's not to disparage them at all, but when the Community Lobbying Coalition talks about multiple projects, and yes, 81 is at the top of the list, it can just sometimes get lost in other projects that are worthwhile, but I just believe that this is something that needs some more attention. And it's not just to solicit and seek funding, but it's to also look at ways to improve safety on 81 in the interim, because that's the travesty of this all. Yes, we have to collect the funding from state, from federal resources, get the attention, but in the meantime, people are dying.
Understood.
I think the number last year was 22?
21, I think, yeah.
21 or 22 people died on our 12 miles of 81 last year.
The bottom line is, Wayne has, I guess, has a good point here, getting somebody to concentrate solely on that, because bottom line is, we can sit and talk about it all day long till we get the money out of them, nothing's going to happen anyway, and it's going to take forever for it to happen, once we do get the money. So it's all about the money first. Now, there's some things that you could probably do, and you've already covered them, is probably lobby for reduced speed limit in the time, you know? I don't care if they make it 55 through that 12, it don't matter to me. I mean, it's usually driver error, but that usually comes from going too fast, or just mistakes drivers make, we all do it. And it's just too much, we know it's inadequate, we know 81's inadequate with merging and ingressy grass off of the highway. So I definitely think it's money thing, which is a...
One of the comments, some people didn't know, we did receive $100 million for Phase 2, but it's not far enough, it's just from the bridge up to Halfway Boulevard, correct?
That's correct, and it's still four or five years out before construction even begins.
And the ramps still are too short, and so forth like that. So we did receive money, and it's going back as far as then County Commissioner Linda Irvin-Craig, when she was in office, that 81 was a top priority of this board, and every year since then, it's been our top board, and we just need to be louder, I guess, so they know. And you would have thought this past year, with all the extra COVID or ARPA money, whatever you want to call it, they had the opportunity to fully fund 81, and it seems like the federal government didn't not choose to do that. Thank you.
Anything else?
And that's everything that I have.
That's my commentary.
Thank you. Well, we are honored and blessed to have our Maryland State Senator, Mike McKay, with us this morning, Senator. Sorry we had to make you wait, but we had a few things to take care of.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. So over the last eight years, this will be my ninth year, I have created a document, a 90-day report, which I've given to each and every one of you. This 90-day report is very similar to the Department of Legislative Services. They create a 90-day report for the Speaker of the House, the Honorable Adrian Jones, the President of the Senate, and the rest of the members of the General Assembly. This document that you have in front of you is every single third reader vote in the 2023 Maryland General Assembly Session. It tells you if it passed and how I actually voted for each and every piece of legislation. Like I said, I've been doing this for the last eight years, this is my ninth year, to compile this report. And the reason that we do that is we firmly believe in full transparency and accountability. Now, we do post this to social media, the third reader votes as they happen in real time, but it's important to me to create a report and then come to each and every board of Commissioners, as well as each individual town council and cities within District 1. There's 23 of you, and so it's a voluminous task to come and meet each in front of you. But I commit myself to you, as the Senator from District 1, that Senator Quarterman and myself have the best interests of Washington County in hand. We look forward to working with you for the 2024 session. I know that we will be scheduling some meetings here in the fall, be able to get your priorities and make sure that we're carrying the water for Washington County. You know, I now serve on, in the Senate, I serve on the Judicial Proceedings Committee. A lot of social issues come through that committee, as well as family law corrections. So it's a little bit different task for me. I spent eight years on the budget committees, but it's been a learning experience, and this past session, there's been quite a few hot-button issues that I've actually got to learn. I'm one of the few non-lawyers on the Judicial Proceeding Committee, and I tell you a little story. I was sitting next to one of my Senators, first time I met her, and she said, "So I understand you're an attorney." And I said, "No, I'm just a junior associate." And... And I said, "No, I'm just a junior associate of Dewey, Cheatham, and Howe." And she said, "Well, where is that?" And I said, "In every single town." I said, "No, I'm not an attorney, I'm actually just a layperson, a businessman." And she really thought that a lot of the judicial proceedings needed to be attorneys. But the beauties of the General Assembly and the beauty of your board is that the citizenry gets to pick who they're going to put and represent them for the next four years. And so it worked out very, very well for the things that I could contribute on JPR, just as each and every one of you have good things that can be contributed for the whole of the Board of County Commissioners in Washington County as you move forward. So with that, it was a high watermark for me. We passed nine bills, normally we only pass about four, so it's not a matter of how many bills that you actually do pass, but I tend to believe that being a freshman senator from Western Maryland in the minority party to get nine bills passed, and those are nine bills that affect Washington County and the other two counties within District One. Very proud we were able to get a hundred and sixty million dollars in funding to come back to District One, and that's all in this report, and just thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, and look forward to carrying the water for you in the 2024 session.
Thank you, Mike.
Questions from Mike? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Look forward to our meetings in the next two months or so for the upcoming session.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. With that, we'll move into citizens' participation. We have citizens that would like to come forward this morning? Anyone? No one this morning? Last chance. Okay, hearing none. Well, the next item is a public hearing, application for zoning text amendment, RZ 23-004, and comprehensive plan amendment, CP 23-001. I'll read an opening statement. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter. The applicant will then have the opportunity to testify, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Public comment and testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the applicant will have the opportunity for a brief rebuttal. Because the applicant has the burden, the hearing and the record will then close, and no other comments, correspondence, or emails will be considered. The commissioners may discuss the issue and take it under advisement, or they may reach a consensus to approve or deny the request. If a consensus is reached, the county attorney's office will then prepare a proposed decision for formal adoption at a later date. Would anyone who will testify today please stand for the oath? Don, you're going to give the oath?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that the response is given and the statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Jill Baker, would you please introduce the matter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated, what we have here before us today is a rezoning piecemeal map amendment, along with an amendment to the land use map of the Comprehensive Plan. Should be noted that these two are interconnected, so one should not be approved without the other. The subject parcel was 22.4 acres. It's located between Smithsburg Pike and Fruit Tree Drive. Pardon me, currently it's located within the designated growth area that surrounds the town of Smithsburg. The requested map amendment, excuse me, the requested, yeah, map amendment is to go from residential transition to agriculture rural. When deliberating on a piecemeal zoning application, there are several criteria that are to be evaluated, including changes in population, availability of public facilities, present and future transportation patterns, compatibility with surrounding development, the relationship of the requested change to the Comprehensive Plan, and whether there has been a change or mistake that has occurred to demonstrate that the request is appropriate and logical. All of those criteria have been evaluated as part of the staff report, and that is included within your packet and as part of the formal docket. Planning Commission held a public input meeting on July 10th, 2023, for the purpose of taking comment on this proposed request. At that meeting, one person did comment in favor of the proposal, and the Planning Commission has recommended approval of both the text amendment and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
So at this time, would the applicant please come forward and present its case?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Fred Frederick, professional engineer and land surveyor, and President of Frederick Cybernetic Associates. My address is 128 South Otomac Street, Hagerstown, Maryland, and with me today is Mr. Troy Jernigan. And Troy, if you would give them your address.
227-25 Smithburg, Stevenson Ridge, Smithburg.
So as Jill just presented to you the facts of the case, it's 22.4 acres. Where it's located, it's currently zoned residential transitional. Now, if you look at the map, you'll see it's across the road from the greater part of Smithsburg. There are no public facilities, when I say that, public water or public sewer on that side of the road, so the infrastructure is not there for the property to be used as residential transitional. The site also has a lot of environmental features. It has a small stream going through it, it has a pond going through it, it has some forest on it, and it's just not conducive to this property being developed for residential. The surrounding area is ag on that side of the road, ag rural. The property that immediately joins this is an orchard, who Troy does a lot of work with, and this property used to be ag, then it was zoned to RT. We're asking for it to go back to ag. Now, it's not often that you'll have somebody coming for you and want to downzone it. That's exactly what we're asking for, that is the best use for this property. Mr. Jernigan has a proposed ag use. He can't put it in an RT zoning, so he would like it to go back to ag, so that he can use it in an agricultural manner, making a product that farmers need and others need, and that is recycling old tree stumps, grinding them up, making it into a bio mix that is used in bioswales for stormwater ponds. It's also used in agricultural around plantings. The wood factor chipped up absorbs more water, holds more water, and they mix it with clay and other materials, and it's needed, you know, for farming and other uses. And that's what Mr. Jernigan would like to do with this property, is use it and put in a facility that takes old recyclable wood and stuff like that, root mat, tree stumps, and chips it up and makes a biomass material. So that is our case. The Planning Commission also heard this and approved it, and it is without a doubt the best thing to do here. It's not going to be used as residential transitional, nor should it be. There is, you know, it has too many site constraints to be used properly, and there are no utilities over there, and I truly doubt if the town of Smithsburg wants to grow over on the other side of the road at this location. I'll address any questions, if you have any.
Do we ask questions now?
You can, if you have questions.
Yeah, I think you can, yes.
Yeah, the only thing I have to say is, you're right on that, it's very rarely if someone comes in and wants to downzone, which I sort of like a lot, especially when the owner wants to downzone. And also, there was, your case stands on there's a possibility of a mistake. Oh, God, I hate the word mistake when it comes to us, but there was a mistake made, and I tend to agree. I mean, it probably, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, but, yeah, I mean, I have no problem with it.
If I may address that, the mistake was probably made because the previous owner, you know, back then, the market was residential, residential, residential. So of course, they wanted to sell it, they wanted to get the highest price. You promote residential, but the property doesn't fit that use.
If I may? I may ask first. I don't think there is, but for the record, is there any public comment here this morning? The community or from the public? Hearing none, then, Commissioner Harvey?
Okay, so my understanding is that for the Smithsburg area, that water and sewage is not planned to go over into that area anyway? They don't have the capacity?
That's correct.
That's number one. And if you're going to put a, some sort of facility on that land that's going to create biomass product, does that require water and sewer?
It does not.
Okay. And what type of footprint would that create there? Is it going to be a factory building?
Oh, no, no, no. It's going to be pretty much open air. He'll buy an expensive piece of machinery that takes stumps and grinds them up and makes the wood chips, and then a mixer that mixes it with soils, sands, loam, other materials to make the product that is in demand.
So Troy, then you would be probably, you know, having to put, you know, like a stockpile of sand and loam, and, you know, piles of this stuff there?
Yes.
And how much of the acreage would be used for that, do you think?
At this point, we talked about, you know, putting a buffer all the way around. Right now, about half of it is being Matt Harsh's farming for vegetables, for Wegmans. When I was a county commissioner, or not, I'm sorry, when I was involved in Smithburg, the big thing is is green waste recycling, getting rid of it, and what a waste to put it in landfills. And I have been talking to Donny Souders, and they have been trying to get a place to do green waste recycling, and I said, hey, that was my goal. I'm a clearing contractor, all equipment is pretty much mobile, that does the actual work. There would be bins, and that would be about it.
And that could happen anywhere, in any agricultural land, anywhere.
Right, you do that, sir.
I mean, that's a zoning permission, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be your problem, it could be next-door neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just state that I support the request, and I know we're not at a vote yet, but I like the concept of what you're looking to do. It appears you have the town's support. As far as a mistake being made, I think it was intentional to change it back then, but I think our Planning Commission has made many mistakes over the years, and they probably shouldn't have changed it at that point. So I support what you're attempting to do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can we move to a consensus on this?
Well, I need to close the public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so at this point, I think that there's no citizens or no comments, no further rebuttal. Everyone satisfied, Jill? You're good? Okay, at this point then, I'll declare the public hearing is now concluded, and the record is closed. Now, Commissioners, your thoughts?
I would go ahead and vote on it. I think it's a two-motion vote, isn't it, Jill?
Or one vote?
Again, you're going to have to reach consensus, because we're going to have to prepare the findings, the fact, and the documents to formalize the...
I'm good with both parts, the zoning, as well as the, what was it? The land, yeah, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
I support it.
I think it's 5-0, so we'll move forward with the legal documents.
Yeah, we'll prepare the final documents and bring them back for formal doctrine at a later meeting.
Okay. Everyone good?
Nice to meet you, Troy.
Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda is FY24 Healthy Families Home Visiting Continuation Grant Approval to Accept Awarded Funding. Nicole, good morning.
Good morning. Nicole Phillips, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. And I am here today for a motion to approve the acceptance of funding awarded under the FY24 Healthy Families Home Visiting Continuation Grant Program from the Maryland State Department of Education in the amount of $138,996.50. The Healthy Families Home Visiting Program is a comprehensive program modeled after a nationally renowned initiative, Healthy Families America. The goals of the program are to prevent child maltreatment through early intervention, promote healthy growth, development, and strengthening of the parent-child relationship. This funding is valid from July 1st, 2023, until December 31st, 2023. Funding in the amount of $3,302 has been included in the award for county administrative support, and no county funds are involved in this.
Questions, discussion?
Yeah, Nicole, who, are we just being seen as a pass-through for this grant funding? Who's the, which organization will administer this? The Health Department?
They are the only accredited healthy families in the area, so they have full source.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the grant and accept the funding.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve what has been submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye posed, same sign. Thank you, 5-0. Okay, next item is FY24 Senior Citizen Activity Center Operating Fund Grant Approval to Accept Awarded Funding. Again, good morning, Nicole. Good morning.
Good morning. Nicole Phillips, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management.
Amy Olak, the CEO of the Commission on Aging.
And we are here today for a motion to approve the acceptance of funding awarded under the Senior Citizens Activity Senior Center Operating Fund Grant Program from the Maryland Department of Aging in the amount of $36,426. The Washington County Office of Grant Management is seeking approval on behalf of the Washington County Commission of Aging to accept funding in the amount of $10,963, which will be utilized to offset the cost of salaries for the senior center staff. In addition, the Washington County Commission on Aging was awarded $17,364 of competitive funding, and in additional, $8,099 in FY23 rollover funds to support the stepping into Wellness Expansion Program. This program will provide participants with the necessary tools to meet their individual needs through nutrition, self-care, and community-based service and program navigation. The Maryland Department of Aging requires applications to only be submitted by local governments, therefore the county is the grant applicant and will enter into a reciprocient agreement with the Washington County on aging to implement the grant projects, and there are no matching funds required.
Questions, discussion? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Got to wake them up.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Same sign? Thank you. Thank you. Right on schedule. Next item is termination of COVID policy. Michelle Gordon?
The item that I have on the agenda, I have attached a copy of the COVID policy that was last updated November the 11th of 2022. In doing some research, Frederick County, Maryland terminated its COVID policy effective October 7th of 2022. Staff would like to establish a termination date for the county's COVID policy and recommend that it, I recommend at this time that it be terminated. In the event that an employee's illness, in the event of employee illness, the affected employee would need to follow any county sick leave policies and procedures. This means that the affected employee would need to follow the instruction and recommendations of their primary care physician or urgent care physician with regard to any potential absence from work, potential return-to-work date, and... absence from work, potential return-to-work date, and potential or required quarantine, mask, or care instructions. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to you. I'm just looking for a termination date.
You just need a date?
Yes.
Okay, tomorrow, 10:13.
9:13.
9:13, yeah.
Yes, I agree with that.
Is that a motion?
Motion, I move that we make this terminated effective tomorrow.
Second.
Just for some comments, I certainly support this as well, but Michelle, on August 9, you sent us an email asking, telling us you were going to update our COVID policy based on CDC guidelines. What happened? I just, I wonder why that changed? If in August, you were doing research to implement our policy?
We were getting calls from departments regarding illnesses within departments, however, when I started reaching out to other organizations, I found that they had actually terminated their COVID policies, that no other organization still had a COVID policy in place. So at that time, I changed gears to determine that we needed to come up with a termination date for our existing COVID policy, and to come up with a protocol for employees to follow if they do test positive, or if an employee tests positive within the department.
I'm happy there's a turnaround, I'm just surprised that in the initial direction, maybe the commissioner should have been consulted first. We could have expunged this a month ago, but...
Okay.
Midnight tomorrow, 9:13.
You had a motion and a second?
We did that, so...
Vote. Vote. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
P posed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news.
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session?
Second. Okay. Going into closed session, let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.